5:00 PM. I would ask Callie or Brandy to note roll call. Only one announcement to talk about, and it's something you all probably noticed when you came in, and that is we're sitting differently. It's a different arrangement. We're trying it. There are a lot more tweaks probably to come. You'll note these are temporary tables that we've used. Thank you, Judd, for you and your team, or Greg for building them. We will figure out how we want it and then get something more permanent. We have, I know, concerns about space, and it feels different. So we got to settle in a little bit to see if this works. There's value in not having to squeeze by people, at least on that side. And there's less squeezing over there. So we need to think about the advantages and then think about what we might do differently. So I'd ask people to make notes about what they like and what they don't like, and get them to Greg or Judd. And then we'll kind of keep working on this. But the goal is to find something that works well and meets some of the safety needs that Judd discussed with us not too long ago. So we all want to be safe, but we want to be functional. So I'll ask for your patience and your comments. Are there any comments or questions now about how we're seating? No? Rebecca?
It's a little claustrophobic up here. Other than that, I like it.
Well, one of the things, and maybe I didn't say this, but Bill and Judd talked to me about is they're going to narrow my seating space so that your tables can be longer. Clearly, I don't need all of this space, and I'm sure the judge doesn't either. So that will give you some more room, and that'll be helpful. But be honest and make some notes and comments, and send them off to staff, Judd or Bill or Greg, and we'll try and figure it out. Meanwhile, it's good to try new things and see if we can find something that works. All right. With that, if there are no other announcements, I would move to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 7:16.
I'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion, comments, or edits? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're moving to items for discussion. I will say that, excuse me, we have a tight agenda tonight in Committee of the Hall. We have a number of key things to get through. So I'm going to put times on these because we can ask questions till the cows come home on things like building permits. And we've got to get through the expenditure restraint and the budget presentation. So right now, I have five to six minutes on building permit, presentation in expenditure restraint program, 15 to 20, and the budget presentation from Jan with questions, about 30. Okay, that's good, too. And then we have some updates to sneak in there. So if we have time, we'll get through all of those. So with that, and no further discussion, I will move to the 2024 Building Permit and Housing Unit Report. And that's Brandy. I know it.
That is me, yes. So you'll find that there's a hard copy of the building permit report in front of you. That was because earlier today, it was brought to my attention that there were some, there was some confusion on the report. After I went in, looked at it, there was some formula errors and cutting and pasting errors that caused some issues. So I redid the report for you. So the hard copy that's in front of you is the most up-to-date from this afternoon. So just really brief. So far this year, we are on a really fast pace for some development. We have added so far 231 new units since the beginning of the year. And then I've also had some commercial, mostly additions is what's included on this report, because a lot of the commercial that we're working through right now, those building permits haven't, the building permits haven't been taken out. Early start permits have been, but building permits have not. So you'll see a significant difference, I believe, at the end of the year. So right now, with all of what we've approved for building permits, the total estimated value that's been added for the village is $59.2 million worth estimated value. And then on the report, as you've seen before, it's just the historical data from years before for comparison, and then a breakdown of the value that's been added based on these building permits to each TIF district under residential or commercial, if either of those happened. The second page, I reformatted this one a little bit because in my brain, I understand it very well. But for somebody who's not tracking with my brain, I can see how it could be a little bit confusing. So I reformatted it just a bit, just to show the available housing units that we have. It is broken down between single-family duplexes. And then down on the bottom, I broke out multifamily as well. So here on the top, this area here is what, the total number of units that have been approved for each development within the village. So when you guys, when we get to approving the planned unit developments and things like that, in those documents, it has a broken down, how many single families, multifamily, and commercial properties are there. So this is the total number of units that have been approved by the village as a whole. The blue area over here is what's currently available, being built, or has immediate infrastructure to it that we can build on it right away. So let me move this out of the way here. So fast track on these numbers right here is this last column that tells you how much of the development that is currently available has been completed. So out of everything that we have available out here, 84%, almost 85% of those projects are completed to date. Down here is the multifamily, broken down by neighborhood as well, with the number of units as a whole, again, that's been approved by the village as a total. In the blue box, these are the number of units that are available and can be built on right now out of that total that's listed in the first column. And so for the multifamily, we've met about 13% of what's been approved is currently being built out there.
So one question, and then Rebecca, I see your hand. The commercial permits, though, are in here or not?
They are not.
Okay.
Right. So what's included in this commercial total right here is mostly existing commercial or industrial businesses that have done some improvements to their sites. We don't have the newer commercial buildings that are going up right now. For the Dickman site on Stevenson Street, they don't have a building permit yet. They have an early start permit, right? So they can do footings and foundation, but they don't actually have their full building permit. We don't include those numbers in this report until they have their full permit because that's where the estimated value and everything comes from on that permit, that building permit. So the existing commercial projects that are currently happening likewise, Dickman, all of that, those are in the early start stage. So they will be included once we have a full building permit brought in.
Okay. Rebecca?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make a little heads and tails out of some of this. Most of it is making sense. I'm looking at the 2024 versus the other years page. So we've got a total residential units that have been approved are in process and been permitted, 231. The SFR is what again?
Single-family resident.
Okay. So that's a total of 54 with estimated construction of 25 million. And then 12 buildings of duplexes? And the estimated cost of construction of those is 8.4 million?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's... I'm just looking, I'm trying to compare apples to oranges. You know, how that goes sometimes.
No, I get it.
It's just, it's a little confusing, and maybe I'm just reading stuff that I'm not completely aware of. So we have an estimated value of 59.2 million for 231, but yet for 181 units in 2023, it was already at 99.2 million.
Yeah, but that total estimated value also concludes the commercial development. So on 2023, under the commercial development, you can see it's 46.9 million just in commercial added.
Oh, that's where the difference is.
So the estimated value includes all development in the village, all estimated tax base.
And that's where you were talking about earlier, where you don't really have that, those numbers yet.
Or the industrial, commercial side of things, correct.
Okay. And I think from my discussions with Bill Chang that we're on track.
Yes.
For being where we should be. It's just the numbers haven't shown up yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Once we get the full building permits, those will be added in.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Can you look down to the available? I'm assuming available means they have streets. It's not approved. It's with streets that they could build homes. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So how many? We got 175 available?
Units, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
I should say they have improvements. It might not necessarily be a full street, but there could be improvements associated with that as well, mostly looking in the Heritage Gardens area.
Okay. Thank you, Brandy. We're going to keep moving tonight just to keep this on track. But if you have further questions, you can either call Brandy or send her an email, which is, I think, her preferred method, and get more answers, or we can raise this discussion again at another meeting. With that, we're going to move to Carol and Bill for the Expenditure Restraint Program presentation. I know we're all waiting for this one.
I hope it lives up to your expectations.
Oh, I'm sure. Well, Greg, should we build a campfire? Can we turn the heat up?
Campfire.
We could do a campfire.
Yeah, I'm thinking I may need that to point to things. The chairing, so I don't have to... All right. Okay, so quick review of the Expenditure Restraint Incentive Program so that everyone understands what it is, how it works, and why we talk about it every year at this time of year. The state basically calculates a percentage based on inflation and new growth and informs us of how much we can increase our expenditures and still qualify for this program. And the program, you know, the goal is to get the incentive payment that they have coming. Okay, where's my mouse? Oh, there it is. I saw it. Okay, there it is. There it is. Okay, okay. So in recent years, these are the payments that we've been receiving. The 2024 payment, we know, is going to be $142,000, and next year's payment will be the same as this year. So we're getting $142,000 in aid from the state as long as we stay within the limits that they've set for us. The calculation works by taking the prior year budgeted expenditures and increasing it by the percentage they've given us and then making sure that our next year's expenditures stay under that limit. And as I said, the calculation is based on new growth plus inflation. New growth, no matter how high our growth is, they always cap it at 2%. So as long as growth is more than 2%, that's what we'll get, 2%. And then inflation gets added to that to come up with that percentage. So for 2024, our growth was 4.6%, but they capped that at 2. And then the inflation was 5.4% to give us a 7.4% increase over the prior year. So that's how that's calculated. Again, as long as we just stay within the limit that they've set, we get that payment of $142,000. Is that clear? Any questions on that part of it?
Rebecca?
She's saying no wait. Okay. So essentially, we pay attention to this every year because we want to make sure and get that aid payment. If we go over the limit and then don't get that payment, we're going to have to increase taxes by another $142,000 in order to kind of make up for that lost revenue. So that's why it's important. That's why we talk about it every year. We try to stay within the limits so we get that incentive payment. One of the things I may want to just bring up here is that our mill rate has been going down. And one of the qualifications for this program is that it has to be over $5 per $1,000 of assessed value. So if our rate continues to decrease, if we ever get to the point where we're under 5 as a mill rate, we will no longer be eligible for that payment. So you may want to keep that in mind as we're going along and it continues to decrease like that. One of the qualifications for that expenditure restraint incentive payment is that we have to have a mill rate of more than $5 per $1,000 of assessed value. For 2024, the mill rate was $5.96, but it's been coming down every year over the last few years. So if that mill rate continues to decrease and we ever get to the point where it's under $5, we will no longer be eligible for that incentive payment. So just something to keep an eye on as we go.
Rebecca has a question.
$1,000 of assessed value. Rebecca had a question. Do you want to...
I'm sorry, of course.
Okay.
That's the other thing I don't like about this setup. I like to be able to see the faces of who I'm sitting with. Anyway, so related to that, what you were just talking about, the mill rate, it seems almost like a disincentive to be fiscally responsible. Or am I misunderstanding that?
I wouldn't use the word fiscally responsible, but one of the things we have to care about is as our assessed values keep going up, you've seen how that mill rate comes down.
Yeah, that's the nature of...
We continue to grow the way we have been, and that mill rate comes down in response. It could eventually get to the point where we are under $5.
So related to that, then, what is the incentive to grow? Well, if you can't grow, I mean, why is that there? Why is that requirement there? What's the rationale? Do you know?
So I think that the intention of the program is controlled growth.
Right, controlled growth.
And the issue that I think we're running into here is because inflation is so high, and so that shakes things a bit here. And then in a market where your assessed value, home values, have increased exponentially like they have more recently, the formula is out of whack, right? And so mill rate requirement of $5 per 1,000 was a standard that they set many, many years ago. And that, that's, you know, whether it holds true in today's world or not, that's the standard that we have to measure against.
So is there anything that we can do to, or what, if we were to talk to someone at the state level as a citizen or whatever, what would be a recommendation to the state to fix that so that it doesn't keep penalizing people or villages and towns?
I think if you want to take a step back, I think, you know, when they put it together, you know, there was probably some thought that if whatever mill rate was under 5, that that would likely be acceptable to not provide any additional incentive. And therefore, then you keep that mill rate higher. So for example, if we did drop below 5%, what that would do is that it would, we would lose the shared revenue. But then, you know, to bring $140,000 back into our tax base would increase the, on the mill rate side because it's been exponentially decreased past that $5. So it's a balancing gimmick.
I like the term you used.
Jim?
So with that 5% mill rate, excuse me, who's setting up, let's say, the assessment? Because could we hold back on assessment? Or is there sort of an adjustment that they use for that, their version of the mill rate? Does that make sense? It seems like we could just not reassess a year to make sure that we keep above 5 or something.
Yeah, so you could potentially do that. So it's $5, not 5%. So where potentially that becomes dangerous, if, so there's a state requirement that we be at full value every five years. And so you may not be catching that until you're in year four or five. Then you have to make a drastic decision in that final year. So with us being able to track it every year, we're able to make small adjustments, and that's the intent of it. I mean, technically, if you hold on assessments and you increase on expenditures or hold on expenditures, that mill rate should technically shoot up or stay the same. But again, that's hard then because there's so many different variables. Once you get into year four or five, say, for example, if we're in a quickly increasing market like we are and we haven't assessed our properties in four years, a property could be going up $150,000, $200,000. And at that time, you're stuck in a, you're stuck in a certain mill rate, right? So you run into things like not only ERP, but you run into state statutory limits on how high you can go in your mill rate to adjust. So in this example, if you're close to 5% and then you assess and all your values go up, it drastically drops your mill rate down below, you know, that $5, but your levy limit doesn't allow you to go past 5. And then you're stuck in a situation where you're having to take not only the hit on the shared revenue, but you're also taking the hit on the levy limit.
Does that answer your question? All right. We can continue.
Okay. So I wanted to take a moment to just explain. One of the things you sometimes hear us say is that if you don't tax or increase your spending budget to the level that you're allowed, you not only leave money on the table that year, but you leave that money on the table every year. It compounds on itself. So I wanted to just kind of point out the fact that in 2023, we did not increase our spending budget to the level that we could have. We held back because inflation was so high, and we were allowed a 9.7% increase, but we didn't want to take that big of a hit to our taxpayers. So we chose not to tax, to increase our spending budget to the level we could have. So we held it down about $350,000. And what has now, what will now happen every year after that is when we go to do the calculation and we say, okay, now in 2024, we're allowed a 7.4% increase. But our 7.4% increase is over and above $9.2 million, which is the budget we settled on in 2023. It's going to be based on that number and not the 9.5 million we could have increased our spending budget to. So we not only left $347,000 on the table in 2023, but we held ourselves from being able to tap, to increase our spending by another $373 the next year because it's the $347,000 increased by 7.4%. So every year, we're going to leave that amount behind because we chose not to do that in 2023. So that's one of the things you oftentimes hear us say is we really should increase our spending budget as much as we can because that ends up being our base for the next year.
Yes, Rebecca?
So when you say you left the money on the table, what money? Where was that money coming from? Was it coming from the taxpayer? Was it coming from the state? Where was that money supposedly coming from?
It would have come from the taxpayer.
Okay, so we chose not to increase the taxes on the residents.
Yes.
Yes, that meant we didn't bring in as much.
Yep.
And that stymies us from increasing. But basically, what it's, what that's doing, it's kind of a twofold, if I'm understanding. You're keeping the level of taxes down on the residents, but you're also potentially blocking your ability to increase the services as you need them. Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because we chose not to tax the taxpayers in 2023, we are now, in a sense, limiting our ability to increase our spending budget going forward.
Oh, just a slight correction to that. I'm sorry. It's not necessarily leaving the money on the table. It's leaving the ability to maximize the expenditure budget. That expenditure budget is made up of not only taxes, but other revenues that we bring in. So for example, when we look at recreation programming, we're running into an issue right now in our current budget that we can't increase past the ERP and we can't expand that expenditure budget for recreation programming or building permits, per se. So we can't continue to bring in the revenue needed to offset the expenditure side on that. So we have to keep our services limited because of that. So that's, it's not only taxes, it's other revenues because ERP does not measure taxes. It measures the expenditure budget.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's keep going.
Okay. So then I'm going to flip over to the other side of the puzzle here, which is the levy limit. You don't hear us talk about this as much because this is not the limit we typically run into. We have a little bit of a cushion running with our levy limit program. So it's the expenditure restraint limit that we tend to hit up against, and that's typically what holds us down. But I wanted to just mention the levy limit program as well because this can also eventually become an issue if we were to get to that point where we've maxed out our levy limits as well. This program looks not at your spend, but at the tax dollars you're collecting. It excludes debt service. So it kind of recognizes the fact that your debt service payments may change from year to year, and it does not penalize you or reward you for that change. It kind of takes that out of the picture and sort of looks at non-debt service-related activity and says, okay, if this is the amount of the levy last year, we again are going to base your increase on net new construction and let you increase that levy by that percentage the next year. And then essentially, they just say you can't increase your levy more than that amount. Now, what is nice about this program is if you don't levy to the extent that you can one year, it kind of carries over. So we do currently have about a $700,000 cushion on that levy side, on that levy calculation. So if, just as an example, I kind of put 2025 in here and I said, okay, if our net new construction should slow down and gets to a point where it's smaller than our need to increase the levy for expenditure purposes, we essentially just cut into that $700,000 cushion that we have out there. So it will buy us a little time if we do see a slowdown. But eventually, we will get to the point where that cushion will disappear, and that will become a problem, too. But in the time I've been here, that has not been an issue for us. But in the time I've been here, that has not been an issue for us.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Rebecca?
I'm just full of them tonight. So I've had a discussion with Bill about this in the past. And one of the questions that I would like, I, I, I think I understand what he's told me, but I think it's, it, it's, it's good to have this one out in the public. So right now, we're kind of limit, we're, we're leaving money on the table, so to speak. Okay, from what, from that previous chart. How do you jumpstart? Um, and when I say jumpstart, to kind of start from fresh again, so we don't, we're not leaving money on the table. My understanding, and correct me if I'm totally misremembering our conversation, would be, let's say we have some incredible growth one year. Um, and we blow past the limits. And now we're, we're obviously going to have to come up with the money that we otherwise would have gotten from this, the ERP through our taxes. But through the growth, hopefully that would mean that we, we were, had that ability. Am I, am I misunderstanding that that would be where you would kind of restart and stop leaving that money on the table? Is that making sense, what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think you're talking about resetting the, the floor for the ERP program. So, so I just want to say the ERP program, we can't go back and we can't, no, we can't call back what we've lost. So if we wanted to say not abide by the ERP program, which we can choose to do, that would mean that we would have to find other revenues to make up the difference, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The only way that that would make sense is if our mill rate was down low enough that when you increase the mill rate or by assessments, assessment values, you make up that difference, a hundred and forty thousand dollars to keep the impact on the home at, at a neutral status. There's other ways that, that you could consider that, uh, when tax increment districts come off, you can balance that. If you have new growth, you can balance that. You got to pay attention because we do have to play by both statutory limits and what is the ERP, if not ERP, ERP anymore than the, the statutory limits itself. So that's, you can, you can do that if that's a decision that, that we want to say, hey, we don't want to hold by the ERP. Now, there's some strategy in there also. There are some communities that will do, will meet the ERP in one year and then not meet it in another. So once, you can always come back to meet it if you've, if you've invested, you know, the, the prior year. And so again, that then starts to, you know, when we're trying to get that, you know, steady growth, that starts to bounce your expenditure program back and forth.
Okay. Carol, do you have a lot more?
No, that is basically what I wanted to show you. So.
I found that.
That helps explain it a little more and.
I found that very helpful.
Time of year.
And I appreciate your efficiency and we're going to move on so that we can get through Jan's presentation. So Jan? Yeah, we do. We're trying it. So your job is, having been in the audience, is to say how it is in our new arrangement. Thank you. No, that's helpful. Thank you, Jan. Kelly might want one for the record.
Okay, yes, all right. Now, now.
Now it's on.
So there are actually fifty-two slides, but some of them don't bear a lot of hard looking at. We can just sort of blow by them. And I think all of you were here last year except Tashidra, who hangs out at the library a lot. So, um, okay. So I think some, some of this, um, is old information, but, um, the statistics have all been updated, so, um, with la- with last year's, um, data, because that's all we got. So can I just, no, where am I going to click? Okay. Okay. So, okay, all right, here we go. Yeah, it is a PDF, okay. All right, so for those of, just a little review here. The library was founded in nineteen sixty-four. It'll be sixty years old this year. Um, we opened our current location in two thousand and two. So the building is now twenty-two years old. Um, I'm not going to read you every slide because I think you can see that. Um, I'll give you highlights perhaps. Um, currently we have, um, nine full-time employees and fifteen part-time employees, about thirty volunteers. That's been a stable number for the last couple of years. Um, our number of cardholders from the village or, um, that call the library, the forest home, is seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine hundred thirty. Um, last year we had a hundred and one and five hundred ninety-nine visitors. We just didn't get that last person to make it a hundred and one, six hundred. But, um, we're, we're open seven days a week. Um, three hundred and fifty-nine days a year. We have, um, Wi-Fi access that's free. We offer free notary service. Scanning, copying and printing and faxing are not free, but, um, it's offered all the hours we're open. Um, we have a lot of really cool stuff that we circulate and actually I have a handout for, another handout, hang on. See that, you see that 3D printer, right? Okay, so. Um, that 3D printer, if you notice, there's some little doodads there. We print those out at a cost of about ten cents a piece. And we use it in our programming where people, um, come in and, and print these, um, and, and paint these little miniature things. And what you see before you is an optical illusion. It's a duck, it's a bunny, it's a duck, it's a bunny. So, um, oh my gosh, yes, it's very cool. So, um, actually, if you're interested in that, that, I think they're doing that painting program is still upcoming and there are other optical illusions that are available. But.
That's interesting.
It's one of the, I mean, we, we do a lot of stuff and we, we save a lot of money by, you know, um, printing our own things for people to paint to do the program. So, um, and we've got board games and rubber games and we've got pickleball sets that we work with the village on. And we just got Gaga balls because you got a Gaga ball pit, so we figured we should have those. Um, we have cake pans and this is an example of a cake that has actually been baked with that pan. Um, Lepso making, um, electricity monitors. We have a, a car scan, um, inspector. When you get that yellow light on your dashboard and you don't know what it is, you can plug this in and it'll tell you what, what the problem is. And we probably have books that'll tell you how to fix it too. Um, we have a lot of programs at the library. This, um, picture is taken when we had the stingray, stingrays, the, in, in tank from the Mississippi Museum, Museum of the Mississippi, um, this summer. We have these really big events that we do each year. Um, summer and winter reading programs, but we do a con- concert series every summer on Market Street. Um, we have a big Harry Potter birthday party, which we just, um, survived. It was really hot and very humid that day. Um, we do, uh, have a dino day in Dino-ember. We have Santa and other special guests and, um, we just did a Bluey party this year to jump on that popular trend. We have book clubs, we have storytimes, we have performances. It just goes on and on. That picture to the, right, is, uh, we had a dragon dance. Troop come in and they, they did the, the, the dragon is a long thing that they dance through. They danced through the library with and they went around our circulation desk and they went upstairs and around the mezzanine. It was really quite cool. Um, let's see, I think this is, I think I was here. Am I going?
Yeah, you were already.
Okay, all right, go forward. Um, we have a work, workspace or workshop in the basement, um, a Makerspace with a CNC machine and now we have a, um, we've had a, um, Makerspace librarian who is a engineer, has engineering degree and, um, who has figured out how to actually use this stuff and teach other people how to use it too. So you can see, I mean, it's adults and children are all learning together. Um, so these are the big numbers. This, this year we had twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two people attend the one thousand and twenty in-person programs the library provided. Um, we also have some self-directed activities where they can, um, do a craft or an activity in, um, in the studio or at the, in the workshop. Um, and then we have, um, guest presenters and, um, the concert series. This is, this is a scene from, um, when Bucky and the parts of the UW band were at the first concert this, this year. Um, last year we had about nine hundred people show up. This year we had over twelve hundred. So that's like a twenty-five percent increase. And, and I think I'll just step back a minute and say, I think, um, all the departments, um, and the village as a whole is, is suffering from growth and growing pains and, and people showing up and wanting service. And it's like, well, we weren't planning on you or we didn't know, our budget didn't plan for you. So we're, we're doing the best we can, but it's, um, I think it's, it, it's a good problem to have. Growth is a good thing, but it's also hard to budget and, and make the dollars stretch when people are standing in front of you wanting something. So, um, uh, this was from our annual Harry Potter birthday party, which was on his birthday, which everybody knows is July thirty-first. Um, once again, just a huge crowd. We know there was over, over five hundred and fifty people showed up for those, all the activities we provided. Um, this Hallow- we, we do a Halloween party every year for kids, for the little ones. And then the last two years we've done, is it two years? We've done a haunted library, which is a lot of work as recent, no, it's. And, and Greg's and Judd's guys that help put up stuff for us and, and, and move things for us. It's, it's a huge undertaking. The community just shows up hugely. Um, I don't know, I love the costume, the, the lady in the top left, say, left corner. She's a Starbucks barista and her baby is a, like a, a coffee, like a Fappuccino or something, ice coffee. Um, so, but those are just, um, some pictures. We had, uh, between those two events that one day, so we had the, the party for the kids in the morning and it was a rainy day, so everybody was in the library. And then the afternoon, well, haunted library is in the basement, so everybody's, it was over a thousand people coming through. And the next day, all the staff was sick, go figure. It's all those little children, I think. Um, but. And we had a big Bluey party, um, this spring and, um, that people just kept showing up. It was just incredible. Um, once again, and probably around twelve hundred people all, it's over, not all at once. We weren't breaking fire code, but, um, we did have, you know, throughout the day, we have counters and on the doors and we have, um, people counting and children were just so excited to see Bluey and Bingo. I mean, it was just like, oh, gosh, yeah, so, um, they, they have pretty much the same, um, uh, the, the dinosaurs have pretty much the same effect on them. Um, the, we have a big dino day. We now own a big dino called Delilah who lives in a, a storage closet. Um, and then we have this inflatable T-Rex that has a little fan going in it and it pumps it up as they go walk around. And this little boy came in, in, in his little dinosaur costume and just sort of followed the T-Rex around. It was very, very cute. Um, then every year we have our annual visit with Santa and that's our naughty elf Brian, some whom you may know. Um, this, this Santa has, this guy has been doing Santa for years. The little baby he's holding is, um, the son of a little boy who, he was, who saw Santa. He was his first Santa like in nineteen eighty-four. This is, so it's, and it's some strange cousin relationship, but this is like, libraries bring people together for, you know, in very strange ways sometimes and familial ways. But, um, our annual, our, um, annual count of our physical collection is seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two, which is down a little bit from last year, but it needs to be because we don't have any more room. We have run out of space on our shelves, so we, we've been weeding very heavily to try to get, um, more space. Um, and while books are still the library's brand, um, the electronic items, which you'll see in the next slide, is, um, is, 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 makes up for, for the lack of, uh, physical items in the, in the book, so, in, in the library. Um, yeah, and that's how many checkouts were. And this is, this is just a chart. You can look at it at your leisure. I'll just point out that, you know, the, the year twenty twenty was the year of COVID where, where we have hardly any circulation, the, the, the orange bar is very low. And we've been going up sort of steadily over the, over the years as we've come back from COVID. Um, Overdrive is the state database of books and audio books and, um, all of those things that can be rented or borrowed with a, a library card. And you can see, um, the twenty twenty-four is that dark, is the brown and only goes like for six months because that's all we had. But you can see that it's just steadily increasing over, over time. We pay that for part of, part of that payment for that comes from, um, in our South Central Library System fees. Um, Hoopla is another, um, place people can borrow, um, audiobooks mostly, e-books, movies, those things. It's a pay-per-use service. So, um, as you, the first year we did it is the blue and it was just going right up. And then, and the next year was the red and it was just going right up. And, um, in, um, January of this year, it was like, no, we, we got to cap this. This is going a little up too, too much here. So, um, we could reduce the number of borrows everybody could have and, um, and, and, and just see it level off a little bit because it's, it's expensive. You're paying for use, right? So, um, if you have hundreds of uses per month, that's, it's, it, it adds up. So it's still cheaper than, than books in the long run because it doesn't require space. Um, in twenty twenty-one, we did a survey and sent out, um, a survey with the actual physical newspaper when we still had a newspaper in town. Um, and we, um, it went to every mailbox. It was one of those, um, additions. And we got, from the data we got back, from the information we got back, um, we developed a, a five-year plan and the key findings, which we shared last year, are, were that staff is the greatest asset. Um, and books are still our brand and they love the programming. They want more communication. I think everybody wants more communication, but I don't know how you do more because you could do it, but it doesn't land sometimes. Um, and they wanted more meeting rooms than study rooms. Um, and it's our vision statement. And so we have a number of goals that we, we've worked on and, and since, um, staff is our most important asset, we, we really want to retrain, retain our, our staff at, at a full service level. Um, so this is us at the Fourth of July parade. Thanks to the village for lending, lending us the. Thanks to the village for lending, lending us the golf cart so we could, we didn't have to pull our little wagons ourselves. So we, we, I was asked to talk about challenges that will impact the budget and, and some of its growth, right? But some of it is, just recently, FLSA had a ruling about exempt status employees. And we have a number of, our full-time staff are exempt. They're learned positions that require advanced education and, and, and they should be exempt. They qualified as exempt with the, the current salary they were making, which was like in the 34th, some thousand dollars was what was required as a, by the definition of the exempt status as well as you had make so much money. Well, with the new rule that took effect on July 1st, the, the, the definition for status still remained the same, but you had to make more money. You had to make, it's like $43,844 a year. And it's, it meant some of our employees weren't qualified and they would. We'd have to look at overtime for them and it more scheduling makes it very difficult because of all the programming we do and people work weeks sometimes pours over two payday, pay periods. It's just, it's better to keep them exempt. Because of a couple of events that happened beginning of this year, which is another story, part of the story, I guess, that we're, we're not paying our employees enough. We can't retain them, is that on the second, third week of December, my adult services librarian told me she had taken another job. And I said, is there anything, you know, what, what, what would you need to make to, to stay? Because at that point, there was still, there was a 4% increase in the budget from what last year employees got that. And that wasn't enough. She's got student loans. She just couldn't, couldn't manage it. She was going to make $6,000 more going to Manona, I believe. And it's like, well, I, I couldn't come up with that in my budget. So she went away and she went away. And then we had to go through a hiring process, which takes time and energy. And we finally did hire somebody in middle of February. And so we had two, two months with no salary for that person, which allowed us then to use that money to get those people up to the FLSA requirement, which, which is good, but when you look at this upcoming budget, then that, that rolls forward. So that's a challenge. One of the things last year, if you remember, the, the library board had, had wanted to get all employees closer to parity with other libraries, other municipal workers. And that was for salaried people. Then we're looking at our, our clerks and who are competing with QuickTrip and McDonald's and all those places. And they, they wanted to get library staff to at least the, the Dane County living wage, which last year was $18. Well, we didn't get there. We got to 16, which is good. I mean, that's, that's, that's huge. People felt really appreciated and like they could manage to stay with us. These are charts, I, I'm not going to linger on too long. I used the, Manona did a study, the village of, city of Manona did a study that looked at comparable villages and towns or cities. They looked at like Stoughton and McFarland and Cottage Grove, and we were one of them that they looked at. Oregon, Pewaki, those places. And they, they compiled data on a lot of different positions, included some library positions, not all. So this is, these are actual from this year, what other libraries are paying. If you look, the third, the bright yellow, the third one, that's where we started. Our pages last year, and we got them up to that $12 this year. There's still, you can see there's still a lot of room for catching up. Let's see, come on, come on. Where am I? Okay, so it's the same with clerks. It looked at clerks. I looked at the median, the average, and then, and then what we're, what we're currently paying. You can see where people are in that bright yellow. Same thing here, adult services librarian, who is actually doing a lot better because she was closer to what, when we hired her, it was closer to what market was at that point. Children's librarian, same thing. I think this time DeForest is red, so you can see we're at the bottom there. Our circulation supervisor too, is pretty close to the bottom compared to medians, averages and others. So. Technical, it's each of the positions you could, I'm not going to keep saying this. So I looked at local businesses. I did a survey of them and I, and I looked at, at the, some of the costs, some of the prices they, they were paying. And, and what's interesting is that although, you know, $15 seems to be as low and we're at 16, so that's good. But what I noticed is they're offering full-time for these kind of positions with benefits. And it's like, it's like, it's just not, you can't compete, I guess, is what it comes down to. So these are some of the other things we're, we're looking at. That access to internet, the pay-per-use services, which I talked a little bit about with Hoopla and Canopy and Overdrive. One of the things we want to do is continue to build our collections and our programs, which cost more money. Costs are rising, as everybody knows. The book, book costs have gone up. This year, it's only 2.16%, which is, which is good compared to previous years. But now they're putting on freight, more freight charges. Our jobbers are. So we, we're out there, we're at, we're out there at the farmer's market somewhere. Not exactly sure where our tent is, but right, 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 yeah, we're right there. So we, we go out and, and, and talk to people and talk up our services and we try to meet people where they're at. I think that other picture is actually the community, the reading pro, summer reading program progress report there. And this year, the village staff is, is having a little thing with the library staff. And library staff is well ahead, of course, but what can I say? You know, sort of surrounded by books, it's sort of, they fall on you, you read them. I don't know. It's a little harder for those, those people, but, but they're, they're, they're doing a valiant effort, so. And they will be invited to the end of summer reading program parties, so. Um, one of the challenges is we're in an aging facility now. It's, it's been 22 years and our carpet in certain spots looks really, really bad, especially around the circulation desk where you get the most foot traffic. Our lighting is this, this dangling stuff, which does a really good job of lighting the ceiling, but doesn't do much for, you know, people trying to find books in the stacks. And you can see our, our stacks are really full. We had a children's room project last year, I think we told you about. It's a fundraising combination of funds raised, donations. The village had some money for new, for new flooring that went towards this too. And, and with those, with that combination of funds, we were able to really redo the, the story our room and make it much more open, much more light and gave the fish a, a good safe home where they're, don't have all these cords running to them, you know? But. Let's see. So we, one of the things, our interior lighting is, is very inefficient, as you can see from the dangling things. And what they put in the story our room is this, these flat LED sort of panels that have really improved the lighting. So that's something that we're, I think we're looking at replacing piecemeal so that there'll be a, a, a part of the library be done like this year and then more will be done each year. The alleyway on the south side of the library was also upgraded with lights and paved, so it's safe to walk there. And nice flower boxes, they look really nice and some picnic tables. Here we go. So one thing, this is a really cool picture too. It's from Google Maps, but it's, was taken in 2020. That's why there's no cars around it because it's during COVID. But we're sort of landlocked where, where we are. We have the Bright Speed to the north of us and, well, Aranda's and that whole, what used to be Wisconsin Power and Light Building there. There's, we're sort of landlocked and I don't know what the solution is, but we're, we're running out of space. And I know the village is looking at a facility study that will go around and look at other buildings and what the needs are for everybody, but it's something to just keep in mind. And so, let's see.
We're at 601.
Well, so a budget, right? I didn't, I wasn't really going to give you a, a budget. I'm just going to give you a big ballpark. This is a big 50,000-foot look. So library board, we talked about what we should put forward for, for staff salary and wages. And what happened when we, the FLSA rule came through and lifted up those other people is it compressed the other people, people who have more, like say supervisory positions or have been there longer. It's, everybody's like within $200 of each other. So that something should be done to recognize their longevity and their responsibility level. And so the library board said, well, let's do 3% on some people, not everybody. And let's see if we can raise some of these other people up. And then also for the clerks, they wanted to go for $18 an hour to move people up that way. And the pages, you know, 50 cents an hour will get them in, in range with other people. Like I said, salary and wages is a big thing. A lot of things build off of that, like the IRS, WRS, the social security, those numbers. We don't know what health insurance is going to be. So those are, those are unknowns. But if, if I go back to the, the pie chart, most of, most of the library is about people. We're, we're, we're a service organization, so most money goes towards people. But 70, 75% is sort, sort of staff. So it's salary, wages, benefits, all of that. But unlike other service organizations, we also have a collection. We also have materials that we circulate and we provide access to the internet and those things. So you can see those, those bigger buckets. What else? The, the, to do everything would be like a 6.8% increase, I think, given my best guess. And some of this is, this is very preliminary because insurance is a big factor and we don't know what that is. I do know some factors, but like the cost for our integrated library system, I know how much that's actually going to cost. But. It, it all, everything all depends. And this is just an interest, I think it's interesting. You might find it interesting. This is where people that use the library come from. You, you can see they're, they're scattered all over the place. There's somebody up in Merrimack, there's somebody over in Bristol. And they're mostly concentrated in DeForest and Windsor, but they're sort of all over the map. So it's, it's interesting. And I'll go back here because, you know, you say, well, they're, they're using our library, but are, but they're not paying for it. And, but they are to some extent. Dane County, we get a reimbursement from, their, their usage based on circulation is about 35% and that's about what we get back from them. We get money from other counties who use our library. And then we have some fines and copy machine money and all that. So the, the revenue piece is the village's shares around, I don't know, 60, 61% around there. So, but that's why I thought the map was interesting because people are from all over, but they also pay. And we do all of this to facilitate communication and yet people want more communication. So we, we try. And it's just to let, it's our 60th anniversary and I put this slide in so I could say sexagenary, sexagenary anniversary. So that's, so that, that's what I got.
All right.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Well, I'll allow one question for anyone who wants to ask one question and then we've got to take a break and get ready for our board meeting. Rebecca?
Very quick question, hopefully. Do you get any access to state-level funds through either grant programs or other revenue sharing?
No, but there, there used to be a program for federal money that came from, with the Library Services and Technology Act. It used to be available to local libraries and I wrote a number of those grants over the years. But then they, the state gets to determine how that money is spent and now it's all going to them to provide statewide programs on various topics, which are of value, but money's nice too, so you can do things locally. But, so no, we don't, we don't have that.
Anybody else? If not, Jan, thank you. I know it's a lot of work to put all this together and as we actually get into budget numbers, we may want to hear from you just on numbers down the road, but you're doing a lot of good programming. Right, right, good. Well, thank you. Here's what we're going to do, guys. We're going to ask quickly if there's any administrative reports. Then we're going to take a five-minute break and come back. And we really do have to limit it. So let's go to staff quickly for updates. Bill?
Just quickly, I want to make you aware that on July 30th, I attended the public hearing for the Interstate Corridor Study and I did speak at that public hearing in regards to the interchange off of Highway County V. The EIS Environmental Impact Study recommends an alternate no-build for that intersection because it anticipates that Buc-E's would improve it before it got to them. And so I spoke about, I spoke against that and that, that the DOT should at minimum consider a build alternative, even though the build alternative is pretty minute, basically improvements to the ramp. And, and so I did invite the DOT to have those conversations with us in regards to improvements at the intersections. If you get any questions about that, know that I did speak at that event. And then Brian Taylor says hi to everyone. He's doing well.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else, any other staff member? Reese?
Just really quick, this weekend is our Dick's Sporting Goods Shop Weekend. So it's Friday through Sunday. It's no longer on Mondays, but just wanted to make sure everyone was there.
All right, Judd?
Yeah, real quick, both of our new hires started July 15th. Pete started the academy in Milwaukee yesterday and the other one, Connor, starts next Monday in Madison. So looking forward to them coming back December 13th when they graduate. The other thing is our Citizens Academy is starting soon. I don't remember the exact date, but if you know anybody in your network, please have them reach out and apply the informations on village's website, Facebook, all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
Quick note, Vinburn Road on Friday will be narrowed. There's a sinkhole that's started a little bit towards the center by the driveway for Walgreens, Pick 'n Save, that area. So the sewer has a, it's settled a little bit and so there's infiltration. So we're going to be doing that work ourselves. It'll be all done on Friday, but it'll be narrowed down to one lane in each direction there.
So avoid it, guys, if you can. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Were adjourned at 6:10 PM. The fact that we ran over, but this is the regular village board meeting Tuesday, August 6th at 6:18 PM. I would ask Callie to note roll call. And I would ask, Judd was up. Go ahead, Judd. You can lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. The village board will convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Tonight deliberating the purchase of public properties for redevelopment in TID 6 and deliberating an intergovernmental municipal boundary agreement with the town of Westport. And Section 19.851G of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Tonight PFAs, PFAS class action settlement. And with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. And unless someone wants an item separated out, I would entertain a motion to approve the items.
We should now approve the consent agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second. If there's no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public appearances. We have one. Gilbert Bradley, you want to step up to the podium, Gilbert? We're trying a new routine here, so.
Gilbert Bradley, address 3058 Vinburn Road, Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. I own some rental property on Renata Court. And starting out three, four years ago when they were going to put the road in and et cetera, I was told that I'd have less water than I had before. So one night here a while ago, there was raining pretty hard and my tenant called me and said, the water is running in the place. Surprise. So I called Public Works around 7:20 or so, director, no response. He said he'd always have his phone on and I could call him at any time. So then I called the village office, phone did not work per, per the sound it made and must have been in the wastebasket. Could not get any sandbags. No one showed up with a rubber bladder device to redirect the water as was promised by the former Public Works Director. But she also said that I would not need it because my water problem would be over after the village got done with what they were going to do. Problems would be over with water repeated several times by the village engineer and the Public Works Director at that time. Called Public Works Director, first part of the week, and asked him who I should get to repair the, do the repair work. And he said, we're not paying nothing. It was a hundred year flood. And I didn't hear anything from anybody else about that being a hundred year flood. Water, he also told me the water did not go over to Birm, but in truth, it went over the berm. He also said that the building inspector should not have issued me a building permit at that time for the windows being that low. But that I don't think would be the building inspector's choice because at the time the plat was approved, there was no restrictions put on my lot or on the lot that I purchased or any. So the building inspector just doesn't go around making up his own rules. He follows what the village has and so that was an incorrect choice of words. Village Public Work Director. Uh, here. To what is now said, I would have less water and not to worry. When, when they were going to redo the street and put sidewalk on the other side and change the waterway and all I ever heard was you're going to have less water, not to worry, not to worry. Well, that went out the window. The village engineer said several times that I would have less water and to, not to think about it anymore. Surprised. With the street flooded, how many people could not leave their houses on Jefferson Street and Renata Court? There's at least 30 on Renata Court because the water was coming across Renata Court. I don't know how deep it was, but it was, it was flooded. And I think all over the United States.
Excuse me, Gilbert, your three minutes is expired.
Okay, I got one other thing to say and then I'll have to finish this next time. But at the next meeting, I'm working on a little project to show you something in relation to what's going on on Jefferson Street. And I think you'll all find it very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. All right. I will suggest Gilbert meet with Judd and Greg. All right, let's keep going then to presentations. There are none, old business. 8.1 is discussion impossible action regarding the cigarette tobacco and electronic vaping detail retail license application for Z and MN Inc. You had two things. You've seen the application form and you have seen the memo from Al. So I would ask us to look at taking action on this item.
Motion to take it off the table.
Okay, we have a motion to take it off the table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right. I'm a little concerned about that, but all those in favor signify by saying, well, maybe let's do a roll call.
So the motion on the floor is to remove the item from the table at the last meeting? So we'll do, the roll call is trustee Langrave?
Aye.
Trustee Little?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Stefan Hagen-Hahn?
Aye.
Trustee Witherspoon?
No.
Trustee Allen?
Aye.
President Cahill-Wolffgram?
Aye. And I apologize, I was thinking you were putting it on the table and I was, that's where my concern came from. So, thank you. And I'm not even on pain meds anymore.
That might be why, then.
Sorry, guys. All right, now we're back to dealing with the item. Thank you for catching it.
No problem.
All right.
You don't do that very often.
No, no. And I was.
Motion to approve.
There's already a motion, excuse me, there's already a motion to, to deny it at the past meeting.
I think that motion was on the table.
I believe it was only tabled. There wasn't a motion to deny.
I made a motion to approve it.
Seconded it.
Trustee Witherspoon seconded.
We'll have to go back and verify that. I'm concerned about that and under what basis we, we might possibly deny it. You saw the memo from Al? And I don't, I don't know of any reason that we would want to deny this.
On what grounds do we want it denied?
It's not on there.
Yeah, the approved minutes from the last meeting, the motion was by Rebecca, seconded by Bill to table till the next meeting.
Oh, that's fine. I could be mistaken.
That's why I remembered.
Removed, yeah, we may have withdrawn it, so.
That's the way I remembered it.
Yeah, me too.
We may have moved, withdrawn it, so.
Okay, we can admit when we make a mistake and we'll move forward. So with that being the case, I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion or comment? Yeah, Jim?
So I bring this up is there's different other uses that are rather limited by say zoning districts that they can be in, is that assuming cigarette, tobacco, electronic vaping devices, they're allowed in the current zoning district. But is, if it would come up for discussion as far as like trying to move it to a different zoning district is maybe being inappropriate for a retail district? Is that reason enough to say table or to deny it to investigate that again?
The business cannot operate in a district that it's not zoned for. So if there is a zoning issue, that would be a basis for not issuing a permit to conduct that business. I don't have any indication that that's a problem and I haven't looked into the zoning.
Right, I don't think it's like an issue at this time, but I am just wondering if it's something that we wanted to bring up for discussion. Would that be a reason to table it or deny it at this time if we're going to bring it back to the planning and zoning or something to discuss that?
I don't think there's any application that's suggested to go to planning and zoning at this point. So I'm, I'm assuming that the applicant is planning to operate in a retail zoning district. I, I don't know any, anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Ashira?
So I, the last meeting, I know we, we discussed tabling this so that we could allow for Al to do his due diligence and do some research. And based on the memo that Al put forth, the business has not, I guess the business has met all the requirements necessary in order for us to approve the license as such, correct? So there isn't any reason for us to not approve the application as it stands as of right now, correct?
You, you said they have done everything they need to do?
Based on the memo you put forth?
Yes, as far as I can tell, they've, they've met all the requirements.
Perfect. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. And now I'll ask for roll call again.
Trustee Little?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson? Trustee Stefan Hagen-Hahn?
Aye.
Trustee Witherspoon? Trustee Allen?
Aye.
Trustee Langrave?
Oh.
President Cahill-Wolffgram?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-2.
Thank you. All right. Item 9.1, budget presentations from village departments, recreation and community enrichment, public services, community development. So I don't care what order we do them, but who wants to go first? All right.
I'll, my name is first, so I'll just take, take control to go first. Who's, who's touching the mouse? All right. I'm over here struggling with this mouse anyways, so I'm going to give Bill some credit that this mouse is a little not responsive sometimes, so. All right, so the presentation was in the packet, but I did actually was able to update some of our numbers and one of the charts later on. So as we get to that, I'll go into it. But this is our department, so a little different from last year with us now adding Tricia on board. So you guys have all met Tricia who's come before the, the board. And then I have Sam here tonight for one of our items later on, who is our recreation supervisor. So we are comprised of three full-time staff, probably about 40 part-time staff that can really change on the time of year, 25 umpires, and we have about 12 contracted instructors. One of the things that we did with the new website this year is we really kind of focused as a department about what our missions and values were. And so as a department, we kind of came up with a descriptor of, of what we believe we are bringing to the community and what we strive to do with all the different activities and events.
Great picture of Simone.
Oh, I know. She was, it's so great. I was like, Simone, I'm going to also put you in my budget presentation. So she's coming famous all over. So this is the mission bullet points that we came up with, which they're a little hidden, but I, I know you would have seen them in the packet. And then the, the values. So we really want to focus on community focus, inclusivity, equality, collaboration, and customer service are our key points of, of what we are doing. So the different things that we offer in our department is we do recreation programming, we operate the athletic complex, work with all of the rental groups, the concession stand, and we work with the parks department. We do, we handle all of the communications with the park rentals. I don't know. Okay. We operate the farmer's market, the community garden, special events with us looking now to next year, we'll be taking over the dragon, DeForest Dragon Arts and the Fourth of July. So some of the trends that we are seeing, so like the library, we continue to see more in, increases in our program participation. So I think one of the things that really sticks out to me this year is that you look at our total program participants from last year was 3,535. We've already exceeded that this year to this point. And, you know, we're in August, so that means we still have about four months left of registration. And this program participant does not include the people that participate in our special events or any of the things that are, are drop-in activities that we don't track those numbers on. So we continue to see an increase. We added additional community gardens this year. We've expanded some of the league opportunities and we've had, you know, additional instructors who have reached out about adding new programs. So one of the big changes for this year is that we did add that non-resident fee. And I think there was a lot of question, I think even from us as staff of what kind of impact that that was going to have on our participation level. From this chart, I think what you can see is it has not had, you know, really an impact like we thought it would. So this top part of the graph here, this is the non-residents that we had participated, or sign up for programs prior to us putting the fee in place. And this is the number of participants that we've had up, sign up since that fee has been in place. So we're really not seeing that, that huge impact like we, we thought we were going to. I wouldn't be surprised if we get closer to the same number just within, after incorporating that fee by the end of the year. Getting into program enrollment, as you can see, enrollment's going really well, same as how we saw the participation. Oh, thank you. how we saw the participation, oh, thank you, participation levels. One of the things that it's always good to note, and I've probably noted it last year, but I'll note it again, is that all of our expenditures really are kind of, you know, in the back half of the year, so we get all of the revenue upfront and then we pay the expenditures as the programs are happening. So while that expenditure amount seems low right now and there's a huge discrepancy, that is going to come up to be closer, you know, probably to a similar break that it is there. I think we'll have a little bit more of a difference in revenues compared to expenditures this year with, in particular because of that non-resident fee, which was the purpose of it. One of the things that we as a staff, Sam and I have really been looking at this year is just the impacts of facility usage, and this is something that was brought to the Public Service Committee in last month's meeting, and we'll be bringing some more information and some decisions will be coming to them and then ultimately to the board as well, but we're seeing a huge usage discrepancy between where the money is coming from for our facilities. So if you, if you look at these graphs, you can see one of our, you know, about forty-five percent sanctioned user groups are the users, and this really only encapsulates the ball diamonds. We, we haven't, I didn't add in flag football at this point just because we don't have the schedules out, and so it wouldn't be fair to only add in the sanctioned user group usage of our long fields and not add in the comparables of what we do as a recreation department, and so I just felt like that was unfair to, to do that, but if you just look at the, the ball diamonds, you can see sanctioned user groups are about forty-five percent, yet they're about two point nine percent of our overall revenue for, for the fields. So with the increases that we made last year to the tournament rental rates, the other user groups have made up a nice window, and then the village does subsidize a hundred thousand dollars to cover the operational expenses of that. So there's a couple of things that are kind of coming into play here. We're looking at the priority of scheduling. Right now, the village is not the number one priority for scheduling facilities. It's actually these sanctioned user groups. And then two, kind of looking at maybe some other ways of how we might be able to either recruit some of that cost or make some barriers in there maybe to limit the number of rentals that they might be able to do because, you know, as an example for sanctioned user groups, they pay a twenty-five dollar practice reservation fee for the year, for, for the season, and they could hold fifty practices, and it's twenty-five dollars whether they hold fifty practices or ten practices. And so that has a really large impact of, of the revenue that we can make there. So just going to be some decisions and something that we're keeping an eye on. Again, with the changes that we made last year, we're seeing some really good strides in bringing in more field rental revenue to hopefully get it so that we can bring down the subsidized amount from the village. So, so far this year, we've already surpassed the amount that we had for last year, and we are projecting to end at around sixty-two thousand for this year. We still have had a lot of success with the volunteer groups this year, even though we've had quite a rainy year. We've had a number of tournaments that we've actually had to cancel either due to weather or, I mean, mostly was due to weather, like either taking the dirt fields off or whatnot. So there's been some pretty big impacts there, but still, we've actually been seeing success, and we have, I think, three more tournaments where I know we have nonprofit groups, so I see us exceeding the giveback that we had done last year. And then I just had to show the new sign because it was exciting, and thanks to Officer O'Connell who went and took that picture with the drone. Oh, also the PD group who, as we said, set the record for what we were giving back, so had to put that photo in there too. Getting into special events, so we still have six events remaining for the year, and at, at this point, we still have a lot of revenues that we expect to be coming in, but at the same time, we have a lot of expenditures that we expect to come in because we have some pretty major events like Yahar River Fest, the holiday tree lighting and the candlelight hike, all of those have some pretty good expenses to those as we wrap them up. And then I will just mention that this week was Farmer's Market Week, and so I know Tricia's been doing just a phenomenal job with coming up with cool, like, special events that are at them. In September, we're actually going to do a Veterans Night, and TDS is sponsoring it, and we're going to give veteran bucks to anyone that is active or former military that they can then spend at the market for the different booths. So we're doing just, I think, some really neat things, and I'm hoping to continue to grow on that for next year. So the big forecast, I don't know if it'll come as a surprise or not, but salaries is one thing. The program costs, you know, wages, supply costs. We are presenting a program late registration fee later, and then just demand and growth and special events. So I did a department comparison. I think one of the things that was interesting is kind of to see that not necessarily always this population the biggest factor of what a community might offer for their department. And so, you know, there are a lot of things that are different factors here, like we have three full-time employees. Well, one of our employees does special events, doesn't do any programming, you know, and some of those communities might have people that just specifically do programming and, you know, some have a community center, some have an ice rink, some have their own facilities. So there's just a, a lot of different factors, but one thing that just kind of stood out to me and, and honestly made me super proud was just seeing the programming that we offer and the number of participants that we have for the size of community, because I think it's also often forgotten that while the village of DeForest may be eleven thousand, really, we serve about twenty thousand with serving Windsor as well, so you know, we, we are serving a much larger population than, than just our residents. So looking at this, I kind of just got a, an average of what those are and then kind of put where those departments fall in that, so that yellow line is the director average for salaries, and you can see that DeForest is far below, and then the recreation supervisor average, which DeForest is, is below, and in that previous chart, I kind of did that ranking, so I had nine different communities were the lowest out of the nine for the director salary, salary, and second from the bottom for the recreation supervisor. And offering really great programs. So for programming in twenty twenty-three, we had sixty-six different programs that had a waitlist for it. This year so far, we've had forty-seven, and we do our best to try to get as many kids in as possible, but sometimes our restraints are the facilities, we just instructors' capacity, you know, we want to make sure that the program is still safe and enjoyable, and we're never going to sacrifice that just to get some extra kids in, because you put a few kids in and it might ruin it for everybody. So we're really mindful of that, but we continue to try to see how we can grow with the opportunities that we have. And to what Bill said, I think one of the parts that's really interesting for us is even though we have the revenue that comes in for it, that we get from program enrollment, doesn't mean that we can increase our expenditures that same amount because of that expenditure restraint program. So we have to kind of play this fine game of, of how do we continue to try to offer stuff but stay within the expenditure restraint, and it's frustrating because if we know that we have the opportunity to be able to offer more, but we can't because of this, you know, it, it's, you know, hard to tell the community, sorry, we just can't offer that to you because of this stupid rule, you know, or whatever it is. I don't want to say it's a stupid rule, but I did, so. But yeah, so going into, I mean, sometimes our, our biggest things are program limitations, facility space, and instructor availability. If all of our instructors are available at the same time, we only have so many spaces, that gives us limitations as well. So the next step that we're really trying to look at is just to, how do we continue to grow our, our partnerships publicly, privately? The DeForest Yards is going to be coming on, so we're going to be looking forward to having a partnership there to be able to offer ice, ice skating lessons and other programs, and other public partnerships. So we're working with Sun Prairie right now, and they're actually hosting a program, but we're going to be taking some registrations for it as well because they have additional facility space that we don't have, so how can we co-op in those opportunities? And then looking with, working with various groups. So a great example is the DeForest Area Youth Basketball Organization reached out to us and kind of said that they're growing to their capacity as well of what they can do. So they wanted to know how we might be able to help and work together so that we have kids participating in the appropriate levels, and so then that comes into a larger participation of like, how can we share facility space? So you have to give up some of your facility space so that we can increase and take, you know, some more kids, and then we find the coaches for that. So I'm growing those types of partnerships with the, the local youth organizations, which I feel like Sam has done a phenomenal job of, continuing to grow those relationships and build trust in them that we all are on the same page and trying to do the same stuff. And then at the same time, try to grow, have measured growth while meeting the demand and staying within expenditure restraint.
And by the way, Reese, we can give you a list of people to tell it's a stupid program.
All right. So the big things for next year is going to be, the differences are going to be special events. So there are going to be some significant increases in the special revenue fund for us taking over the Dragon Art Fair in Fourth of July, but on that same side, we should see the significant increase in revenues. And one of the things with that Fund Two Thirty is it is not actually impacted by expenditure restraint other than from what we subsidize for Fund Two Thirty, which is where the athletic complex also falls. So, again, Tricia has done some amazing jobs this year of learning from the DeForest Dragon Arts Fair, and I think she lived at this park for Fourth of July for those three days. At one point, I think she told me she had done like fifty thousand steps or something. I'm like, oh, gosh, I don't even know, like, how you're doing it, but. So with that, we sat down as a staff after to kind of talk about what are going to be some things that we're seeing for next year with us taking this over. We'll have some additional supplies, like trash bags, and we talked about doing some overtime hours for park staff to make sure that we had staff on site to help make sure that we had the trash cans cleaned up, because, I mean, I was there, I saw they were overfilling, and so trying to do some of those different things to make sure that we're having successful events that are, are safe. And then I just kind of wanted to go into why the community enrichment and recreation department matters, and how this fits into the strategic goals and objectives. So I know Bill has put some of these things, but I think the, the programs and the events that we offer are the things that help make this be a small-town feel. You know, we're bringing people from all over the community together for programs, for special events, and these are the, the placemaking activities of why people move to communities of where they move. I know my parents told me when I was younger, when we were moving to Watertown, they said two things they looked at is the school district and what their parks and rec department had to offer, and that's why they, they chose that community, and I firsthand lived in those parks growing up, hence the reason probably where I, I am, where I am today, but. The next thing is to provide a place for visitors and travels, the opportunities for cool tourism attractions. I think that's where we have the athletic complex, and again, with us taking over some of these larger events, where we're wanting to bring in people from outside of the community. And then the healthy quality of life through our trail system and natural resources, and you know, certainly this is also Greg and Judd and all the amazing things that they do, and how we can get people, events and activities out on, on those areas to get people to use those resources. And then I'm normally really bad about saving opportunities where people give us credit because I feel like I'm normally used to trying to answer and put out fires. So I did have to dig a little bit, but it was, it was fun kind of looking through and seeing these different testimonials that I found through emails, one just talking about our farmer's market, the community garden, and just a local resident talking about our activities. And these are the things of why Sam and myself and Tricia, we do what we do is to have these little glimmers that, that add to, to everything, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Reese. Rebecca?
Let's get back to that ERP. No, just a quick question on this. How, it's kind of a multi-part question. How do you believe that the ice skating partnership will be affected, or how, how will ERP potentially affect that partnership? And I think you may have touched on it, but maybe I didn't quite understand you. Same question regarding the Dragon Art Fair in the Fourth of July.
Yeah, so as I, I did touch on the special revenue fund, so the activities and events that we're going to be looking to do in DeForest Yards, I believe we're, we're looking to do a special revenue fund for that, and so then it would not be impacted by the EP, whatever, ERP, thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, other questions? Chan?
First, I wanted to say I think you guys are doing a great job with your department, and I think that DeForest offers a lot of great activities and things for a lot of different varying levels of skill and, and just a lot of different variety. So I think that's really great, and I love the veterans bucks idea that you're doing. That's really something new and different, off the tangent from where we've been. But I had a question just for my own curiosity. Where, where did you get your info regarding the other communities and what they're paying their supervisors and directors?
Yeah, so the one thing that's really cool about our industry is we're all very close, or a close-knit community, so I actually created a a survey and I sent it out to all of their directors and asked them to provide all the information, and then as I sent out the survey, I realized that they could have answered some of those questions in various ways, so then called them all to confirm that they were running the numbers and providing the data in the same way that we were asking for it.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, other questions? Tashira?
Not to switch topics or confuse things a little bit. So I know that over time, we've had some challenges with the programming in terms of overarching and hitting the different populations as we will. A lot of our programs touch littles or specific populations, specific schoolagers, and different things of that nature. How have you guys in terms of researching or getting out there to the community to make sure that we're hitting various populations, our teens, really engaging them, and the forgotten's in the community to be overarching? And I know that's very challenging in terms of getting them engaged and making sure that we're capturing their attention. How, how have you guys addressed that? You know, the ones that aren't the basketball players are the ones that really don't touch the different things that we have available to them. So how, how are we approaching that, or really getting that market of individuals that we have in our community to keep them engaged so that they're taking full advantage of all of the wonderful amenities that we have?
Yeah, so I, I think that's a great question, and, and sometime, I mean, a lot of times, it's, it's very challenging, and we continue to try to go to different trainings. I mean, that's one of the reasons why we go to our state training, we go to the national training to find out, like, what are trends, how are communities having success with hitting some of those hardest demographics? But also just continuing to have research. So one of the things that I'm excited about this, this program guide we just released actually is we offered a whole series of music different classes for kids all ages. So it's ukulele, it's piano, it's guitar. We're continuing to try to grow our art programming and options and talking to instructors about how we can adjust some of those age ranges to try to hit a larger market. The high school age group, I just have to say, I mean, it's The high school age group, I just have to say, I mean, it's, it's one of the hardest age groups that I think it is to try to find programming for because their mood changes if the wind blows. And they'll tell you, we want this program, you try to offer it, and then they're like, well, I just didn't, I don't want it anymore. Like now that's old news. You know, so sometimes it's trial and error, and, you know, we're fortunate that we have had some good partners that are willing to, you know, try to throw until we can try to get something to stick on the wall. But it's definitely something we're looking at. We're also looking at trying to add some adaptive programming going forward in the future. And so we have a connection with an instructor and are kind of just working out the details for that right now and trying to see how we might be able to grow that. So I feel like that was the politician's answer to it, but it's the best answer I've got.
Rebecca?
It was actually a good question, or answer. Great question, too, which begs the question, do we have available to some of the demographics that are obviously a little bit lower income? Because a good chunk of these programs involve some sort of a fee. I'm assuming most of them. Do we have anything available either through local businesses, local organizations that offer scholarships for some of our lower-income folk?
Yeah, so we provide scholarships for program participants. So if they receive, anyone under 18, they receive 50% off of program registration if they receive free lunch at school, they receive 25% off of program registration if they receive reduced lunch at school. I do know that the school district has social workers that are phenomenal, and they work with families as well to find funding outside of it. So we've had a few families in the community who actually get their whole program participation fees covered because they get monies from groups in the county. I think Rubicon might be one of the organizations that will provide funding. And so we work with the social worker and those families to make sure that they can secure a spot, and then we figure out the funding with them after so that they can participate.
And do you reach out to any of like, I'm just thinking of some of the organizations that kind of run through my head, like the Lions Club or something like that. I don't know what all there is available. I know there's some of these programs, some of these organizations actually do offer different types of scholarship help so that families that otherwise could not participate can participate. And sometimes this is just an incredible opportunity for these kids that they otherwise would never be able to access. Have you done any research on some of the different organizations in and around our community?
I have not. And it's certainly something that we can do, but, you know, I can certainly say that we always try to work with families to make sure that everyone participates. I don't think I've ever had an opportunity, or I've never had a situation where we've turned a family away from participating in a program because of a fee issue.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jim?
So I'd say thank you for that question, Rebecca, because it brings up another question. Is that actually mentioned in the program that there's opportunities for the reduced and potentially even free?
It is listed on our website that there is financial assistance, and then there's an application that they participate in. I believe it is also in our program guide. I would just have to look to verify, but I'm pretty sure that we include it in there as well. And then the school district certainly knows because we work with the school district to get the information about the families. They sign a waiver for us to be able to, for them to release that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, well, we will keep moving then. We thank you, Reese. I'll tell you one limitation of how staff are sitting. I can't see Reese's mouth when she talks.
Next time, maybe I'll stand up. I don't know.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, the point. It's like the, it's like the...
All right. We're going to move on to Judd and Greg then. The Greg and Red show. We'll have to get those stools that Carol and Bill had at the library.
Anyways, welcome. Thanks, everybody. So we're going to talk about our proposed public services budget for 2025. This is kind of just a quick overview of our department as a whole. We've got about 14 folks, 15 folks, myself included, that are part of the public services, as well as then part-timers, which we have five, six part-time mowers. Dale Jenkins, who's been here for, before Dirt, he's a part of that group. And then we've got people who are helping out at the yard waste site as well. And some of them are mowers, so we've got some overflow and extra things that are kind of there, but they're not listed here. These are the main folks who kind of keep everything rolling day-to-day throughout the village, and then in the wintertime with the mowing, or plowing and whatnot, so. Theme ongoing is the average pay for public services employees for, I guess, everywhere it is. We do an awful lot with not as much pay for folks, right? So these numbers are based on results from the City of Monona Classification and Compensation Study. So we're compensated below the average of similarly-sized communities. So when Monona did this, they contracted out to have that study done. They looked at comparable-sized communities, so it's not, we're not judging them like us against the Milwaukee or, you know, bigger communities. And so for our foreman at the top section, as you can see there, below where, whoops. Touchy. They're below that line. So this average line is the line here. We're here about, it's hard to see this far away. Yeah, it was about 60. So I mean, it's about $10,000, $11,000 difference, I believe it was. And then the streets and utilities guys, which makes up almost all of our public services folks, are significantly, again, below that average at $59,000, and that average is much higher than that, so. $51,000, I must have typed that wrong. So when we did this, we kind of put a forethought through that we really want to make sure our employees are compensated, right? They're the lifeblood of our community. They're the guys that do the work and give an incredible amount to take care of them. So as Greg and I went through and did this, we were very conscientious about what we can do and what we can't do. But a lot of our stuff is just a need, like it's, it's services that we're providing. And so based on that, we're having about an increase of 1% in the public services budget, which is our biggest budget. Some of the increased areas are wayfinding signage updates. So you may see some of those wayfinding signs around town. They were put up in 2013, right? 14? So they're 10, 11 years old-ish. They're starting to show some of that wear and tear, so we're looking to do that. And we have reached out to the Village of Windsor. They are also on some of those wayfinding signs, and they've agreed that they would participate. We would like to have banner poles for the decorative streetlights throughout downtown. We're going to continue to have those streetlights on a replacement schedule, so they're not falling down at various times, but we can kind of be more proactive with that. But with that, those banner poles tend to break that hold those banners, so we want to have supply on hand and replace the ones that we have so they're, we don't have that wear and tear. In our mechanic shop, we have a pit. There's wood boards that we have that are over the top of that, and we have to move those, and then you got to stack them somewhere in there in the way, and it's not very safe. So we want to put in a true oil pit protection cover. And then we're also transferring operating funds to our ERP, not expenditure restraint program, but the more favorable and popular equipment replacement plan. And so we're looking to purchase a salt brine machine. So we currently budget about $3,500 a year to buy salt brine from Madison. We can get our own machine that will make it for us for $7,500. So over the time, we'll save that money and have that money put into that ERP plan for replacement costs of that and other equipment as we need it. Parks budget, we have an increase of 7%. There's a lot more that's happening on the park side with things, and then there's, it kind of bounced back and forth different years when things need to happen that will cause maybe us to have to borrow from parks for the public, and then public works, and public works back over to the parks. So and you'll see there's a theme that says based on insurance assumptions. We don't have insurance back yet. I don't really have to budget for that insurance stuff. Somebody else in the department does, but I don't know what it is. We don't have that information. So I just went off of an increase, sizable increase for this year to come up with that 7% number. But we've had porta potty rental requests. We've talked with those here in the past, so we're going to have more porta potties out and throughout the year as people are being more active out and about. The dog bag, poo bags, there's an increase there. Those are expensive. We go through an awful lot of them for people, providing those throughout the parks, trail systems. So there's an increase there. We'd like to add a border around the Hank's Hollow Park Playground Equipment. That's, will keep the mulch in, and it helps prevent weeds and other things from growing back through there and going through that. They'll have two handicap accessible entrances on that border part. We'll have a picture of that here in a little bit. We're going to have an installation of new lights at the trailside drive park shelter. We want to stain Fireman's Park Shelter, crack fill a lot of the trail segment, and then fertilizer applications in various parks to reduce the amount of weeds are some of those increases for the park side, the budget. And then our natural resources budget has a decrease of 20%. You're going to say 20%? What happened there? Well, we didn't fly a helicopter. I wanted to, we didn't. It was good. We were able to still find out how many deer we had in the village without having to have that incredible expense. So we brought that down to a manageable number. We still have a number there because we're going to have ongoing management practices that are going to cost some dollars. And then restoration in natural areas, work came in a little less due to how they are managing those properties for us and basically not burning every year. They typically burn two to three years, and that line can change every year as additional things come on or fall off depending upon the year. So that's how that will, that's been going. So here's Hank's Hollow Park. If you've never been there, we would just put a border around this edge. The border is probably four inches high. Oh, maybe a foot. Okay. That will hold the mulch in, keep the grass out, but then there'll be some handicap ramps for accessibility for those that need to get to it. This is an example of the oil pit. This is what we have today are these wood slats, you know, kind of, we got to, they're heavy, bulky, we got to pick them up. This would be more like what we'd want to do, roll back and hold into place and then be safe to walk across. Downtown streetlights that have been starting to fail occasionally, we're replacing those. They're well over 20 years old, and those bases are rusting, the bolts are rusting, so they can fall.
That's not storm damage, it's just age.
Stage, salt, salt damage right from plowing, that kind of stuff.
All right. Well, it looks like Rebecca has a question.
No way.
Surprise, surprise. First off, really? Dog poop bags? People have their own dog? They can't bring their own bag?
Some people have them on their little leash things. You can see they got a special one.
There'd be a lot of folks like that.
I don't know if you've seen, we have those stations throughout our community. And then if we didn't have them, I think we would have a lot more stuff left on the side of areas.
That's possibly true, but at the same time, we also have a code that, you know, a statute that says, you know, pick up your own dog poop. I'm sorry, I'm very much a person of take responsibility of your own stuff. That said, no, it's not all that much, but it's more the principle of it than anything for me. That's just a little spiel. Anyway, so it sounds like salaries are going to be a big thing that we need to potentially focus on and somehow maintain reasonable level of services. Anything, I would, my personal preference is that we have as little, if any, extras just this year to maintain our, maintain our restraint stuff, but also, because I would like to see us get our, get all these salaries at a more competitive rate, but we're going to have to tighten the belt somewhere. So I think we need to really concentrate on where can we tighten without hurting what we're doing for the public. That's, that's my own opinion.
All right. That being said, does anybody else have any other questions? Jim?
I guess I was just going to question about the light poles. Was it the banners that you're more interested in the poles itself? You showed like the broken pole. And sort of a follow-up with that is, this is a long time ago when I was working with different developers, there was different specific poles that you needed to get to be complying with the Lion Energy and stuff. Is that part of the whole proposal then?
No. So all of our decorative street poles are all from one company. We buy them, they're one brand, basically. So they're all the same, but these are just getting too old. The bases are breaking for the streetlights. And then there's the banners on the new poles that the wind just breaks the poles with the banner on them. So getting more poles so we can replace just the banner poles is an extra cost that we typically don't have in the budget, so.
Thank you.
You know, and the one thing that residents have brought up to me is concern about putting more Christmas decorations on our poles all the way up Main Street to the Pick and Save Area and beginning at North Street and bringing some cohesiveness and more Christmas spirit. And I know that may not be in the budget, but I'd be interested to know what it would cost to increase the number of Christmas decorations that we have. And I know that may not seem like such a big deal, but I know people at Christmas really like it.
Yeah, we can definitely look into it. It's, yeah, not going to be cheap, but yeah, we can definitely look into it and get you some prices.
Okay, that would be helpful. I got probably a dozen calls about that last year.
We could also look at it, it may not happen for this holiday season, but we certainly can do it for next Christmas time, right? There's a lot of those, they're very expensive. I, we get catalogs for them, and they're pricey, but you can maybe get them at a discount if you buy them just after the holiday season, right? Just kind of like, if you want to buy a fake Christmas tree, the best time is after Christmas, not before.
Right, right.
So we may be able to do it and get it a little less, but it's still, it's going to be pricey, so.
Okay.
We can get prices if you like.
I have no idea, so I don't know what to tell them. So, all right. Any other questions? You guys have been doing a great job. And the one other question I've had is, we keep growing rapidly, and are you able, in your plowing and mowing and all of your services, to keep up with our growth? Or do we have to somehow begin to address that with builders and developers?
From a plowing perspective, we're able to keep up, but as we add more streets, it's certainly going to be more difficult, right? We have an extra patrol truck that we've added that will be coming. Finally, they're off being built. We got the chassis, right? So we got the boxes and the piles to put on. So we'll have that extra apparatus, which is the big machines that can move a lot of snow for us. But we will probably start to have to look, to think about additional bodies as well down the path, as well as parks. As we get more parks, we either have to find more part-timers to help us mow them and keep them maintained, but also the trees that we have, we have a great urban tree canopy. We need to maintain them, though, and it's difficult. It's limiting with the number of people we have, so those are things, I don't think we want to get away from it because trees provide so much value to us. Those are things I don't think we want to get away from it because trees provide so much value to us for. Stay on purposes for rainwater, storm water purposes, and then also provides. Shade for people in the community. It provides aesthetic aesthetic pleasing value to each street or mind. So they're all things that we have to do, but we have to maintain them. So those are things that are we've been talking about where are those? How can we address that? How can we continue to grow forward with that? But from. Roads and 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 mowing things. It's certainly something we have to consider, but at this point we're good, but it won't be another year or two. We'll probably need some more people.
Just in the CIP, which will be coming up in the next month or something. Well, we do have some snow equipment that we do need for sidewalks and trails.
Okay, Bill and then Jim.
So just quickly talking about adding more FTEs or LTEs employment. So one of the items that we're working with. The university program on is the financial forecasting, trying to predict and understand what. Future growth impacts may be to the overall budget. How ERP plays with that, how statutory limits play with that. Anticipating growth in staff so. That we're not running into, say, a budget year where we're having a higher. Three people at a time, four people at a time. We want to we want to kind of just like what we're doing with. The tax rate and the budget kind of have a steady increase. In those services so that we're growing controlled overall. So that should be coming in in the near future here. And we continue to have those discussions internally about. Where we need employees, not just in one department, but. Overall in the village as we grow. Obviously, you know, and I know that that. You know, employees and salaries and benefits are the most expenses to a budget. And so that's that's where we have to carefully plan.
Thank you. Jim?
I'm so you mentioned like. When you asked your question, you said something about like developers or something and I guess I'm going back to. Maybe ten fifteen years ago and Alan, I'm looking at you a lot because. There was some time when we added a lot of different impact fees. And I want to say say like road maintenance, that's not something where you can necessarily put an impact fee on the developer. So. I think that's probably going to be a budgetary concern, not necessarily an impact fee we can pass on to developers. That's correct.
Correct. I do think there is a wheel tax that's available to the community, but I don't think we want to go there.
All right. With that, I'll thank you guys and we'll move through our 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 agenda, but this is helpful information. All right, here we go. All right, nine point two discussion impossible action authorizing the village administrator to execute a conflict.
One more presentation. The community development.
Where? Oh. You guys made this rough. I need bullets underneath these items.
That would be helpful.
Thank you. All right, Alex, you're on.
I'll try to go fast. Try. So I just want to preface this that this whole discussion about provision of services and managing growth was. A perfect segue into some of the things that I'd like to explore this year for our department. So just to recap, so the community development department comprises sort of two divisions, if you will. One is sort of our planning and zoning. Side of things. The other is economic development. On the planning and zoning side, obviously a heavy piece of what we do is facilitating building permitting and inspections. Development review for larger projects is a big one. We also do long range planning from comprehensive plans, housing studies, and then code enforcement is also a big piece of ours. So Brandy and myself comprise the community development department, but this year we added an administrative assistant who was part time for the first half. Of the year and is transitioning into full time. And that's been, again, talking about growth, that's been a huge boost for us to manage some of that. On the economic development side of things, a lot of that is focusing on business retention and expansion with both our larger and smaller employers. Business attraction as well as well as facilitating developers coming into the community for various projects. Small business support and then some of the place making strategies like the library alleyway, some of those types of activities as well. So last year, the focus, again, tapping into the strategic plan for our department was a focus on housing. Which or excuse me, this year I'll say last year's budget, this year's twenty twenty four. For twenty twenty five, fitting perfectly into the discussion that we've been having. This is from directly from the strategic plan. Looking at cost of service delivery. So that's that's a big piece that we're going to be looking at this year. And then. There's so these are the actual pieces from the strategic plan, but what I'm looking for to do this year is called the cost of community services analysis. And so this is basically a study that is working with a consultant to identify what the actual impact is. Across all of our services. Or various kinds of development. That's everything from residential, multifamily, single family, commercial, industrial. How does that impact the way that we provide services from EMS to police to the infrastructure that's out there? All of those things and and this could be as as Jim, you you kind of mentioned an input to potential fee adjustments. Yeah, you know, we've had discussions about how do we view different projects that are requesting incentives? This could also be an input towards making just a more informed cost benefit analysis as we consider those requests. So I did reach out to a couple of different organizations that perform these kinds of activities. And I got a range in between thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Again, a lot of that from my conversations with those folks is. It it ranges based on the amount of staff time to get some of the data because they're heavily reliant on our data input. And we hold the keys to those. So that's one thing that I'd like to explore this year in in the budget. The other piece is code enforcement. I kind of mentioned that we have that as as an additional. Thing that our department performs. Our neighbors in Windsor recently contracted out for code enforcement services. There's a third party that does this across a number of municipalities throughout the state. Did reach out to them to get some preliminary pricing on what that looks like. Currently, we. We allocate time to code enforcement. It it's fairly limited. And it is reactive, strictly reactive. Well, I shouldn't say strictly reactive. There's a component of it which is proactive as well. The the consultant that I was looking at, they provide services for forty nine dollars an hour and we can structure contracts however we. However, we want to do that. If we were to average twelve hours a week, again, I have the numbers on here, it'd be roughly thirty thousand dollars to the budget for a full year. If we wanted more of a reactive approach, say, not driving around the community actively looking for code enforcement items, but just responds responding to complaints. It's likely averaged more towards four hours a week or about ten thousand dollars in the in the budget for the year. So those are two new projects and programs that we're exploring this year. Where'd my mouse go? Same way. There's definitely a lag. So to look at this as a full. Budget perspective, you can see obviously our biggest piece is fifty percent of the budget is for building inspection costs. Again, that just speaks to the level of development that we have occurring in the village. The bottom line here for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five is proposing an increase of roughly sixty thousand dollars. And that reflects the forty thousand dollars for the. Cost of community services analysis as well as the more proactive approach to code enforcement. So that's the way this is currently configured. From the revenue side of things. I just, again, speaking of the growth that we've had in twenty twenty three, you can see the revenue for development fees permitting. Stormwater, some of these various fees that we get for basically construction. Last year, twenty twenty three, we it was just a tremendous amount of revenue coming in over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. To date, we're trending in that. Way again for twenty twenty five, preliminary projections are also up in that neighborhood. But now it comes down to managing that growth again. This is. I've lost my mouse again. Forgive me. Oh, no, can't roll. There we go. On the economic development side of things, obviously much smaller numbers. This is primarily associated with some of the website features that we have on developdeforest.com, which is the economic development. Website, site search. I also use some marketing programs to to put out some data to developers as well. And then again, facilitating some of that business retention and expansion and business events. Can you advance for me, Bill? Thank you, maybe. Oh. Hang on. Okay. On the redevelopment side of things, again, as we start to look towards putting together a capital improvement plan, which I think. Was mentioned that that would start coming in the next month or so. Just to recap, we did have the general plan for redevelopment adopted in twenty twenty three. This spring, the village and the CDA approved a funding agreement for various redevelopment projects. This is a little snippet of redevelopment project area and a from the redevelopment plan. Just a couple of little quotes from the funding agreement, particularly as it relates to the CDA, looking to construct. Potentially construct a seventeen million dollar facility. Mixed use was multifamily residential and forty five hundred square feet of commercial space with a higher quality design. Basically using a funding mechanism through TID six. In twenty twenty four, we're going through a project plan amendment, which should be coming your way here soon, but in planning for some of the activities in twenty twenty five. I'd like to start us considering getting some costs into the CIP. Associated with the potential purchase of properties for redevelopment. Relocation, provision of relocation assistance, and then potential demolition and environmental remediation. So. That's something that when you go to review the CIP. Will likely be included in that as well. And I lost my mouse again. And I will stop there.
All right, questions for Alex? Good presentation. Rebecca?
Yes, it's me again. So you you mentioned managing the growth. I mean, so far we've been doing a good job, but it's starting to become a little bit challenging from time to time. What do you foresee? If we were to continue going about things the way we've always done. What would you project? The outcome to be on being able to manage our growth?
Well, I think that that's exactly why a study like the cost of community services analysis is needed because I couldn't even begin to tell you how that would affect. The entire village. I mean, we're talking about fire, EMS, police, all the all this infrastructure, the whole kit and caboodle. So I think something like that is critical. And I just wanted to also mention that the so those quotes were based largely on. The potential data acquisition, but I wanted to tap into what Bill was mentioning too, in that the university year program. May also serve as an input to that to kind of reduce some of that. So to answer your question, I couldn't even begin to tell you. But I think it is, I think it behooves us to get ahead of it by doing something like that.
Yeah, and then the the follow up is related to the code enforcement program, which. I find intriguing. I can, I I don't want us to become. Uber code enforcers, but at the same time, I agree, I think we need. To do a better job in being able to and we're limited in how much we can do. I don't want to be necessarily going around and just, okay. You're two inches higher than you're supposed. I I don't want that, but I think I think a hybrid of pro and. Reactive might be. A better. Balance where, yeah, you know, maybe not not every single day, but. Once a week getting out and just driving around, seeing what what they see and the rest of the time, maybe. That's just my initial thought because I just don't want the residents of the community to. Begin to think, oh, my God, they're going to be looking for every every little thing because all they are about is just money, 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 money. And I just don't want that to. To happen. So.
That's helpful input because there's definitely, I think there's definitely a couple of schools of thoughts on that one. So I appreciate that, the perspective on it.
All right, anybody else have questions for Alex? If not, Bill and then.
I just have some some quick data here. We talk about, you know, we talk about growth in a lot of our presentations. And you know what? How does that look like? We did go, I did go over and look over the that new construction over the last last several years. And so I kind of want to just read them to you here. So this year it's it's four point nine eight over last year, which was about two billion dollars in in equalized value. In twenty twenty three, it was four point six percent. Twenty twenty two was five point zero seven percent. Twenty twenty one was four point six four. Twenty twenty was four point eight one. Twenty nineteen was six point five six. Twenty eighteen was the big one. That was nine point two two. And then twenty seventeen was five point eight. So that's it's. It's sustained growth, but each year scoring more than the previous because your equalized value is is getting bigger and bigger. So that's that's been the trend and we don't we don't see any indications of it slowing down at this point. Considering we just annexed a lot of property to the west.
Okay, thank you. All right, the only name left in this list is Brandy. Do you have something to share with us? He did it. That was clever. Thank you. All right, well, let's move on now, right? Is everyone ready? I can do it. All right. Nine point two. Discussion impossible action authorizing the village administrator to execute a conflict of interest waiver for Verbecker Associates. Bill?
I am trying to pull up the agenda, but. So I was informed by Verbecker that they were. Approached by the community center, the cornerstone community center to submit a proposal for future site. Planning for that location. I'm understanding that in addition to parking lots and. And entrances and shelters, et cetera. They want to have a better understanding of of what their future growth in that location looks like. Prior to submitting a proposal for that work, they had asked if we were concerned about conflicts of interest. And since we do contribute to the budget of the 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 community center. I I felt it was probably safer to go ahead and get this done. And so that's why it's before you today. They have not submitted their proposal yet. A copy of this is also going to. Senior Community Center Board for review. Take, I'll take any questions.
Okay, any question? I don't know that. Yes, Colleen.
I would just make a motion to approve it.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion? Jim?
So it might be a facetious comment as I don't exactly know what that word is, but. So why? Why is it a concern for this one? Because to me, it's like. Verbecker has been working with other developers and also working on our behalf too, and it hasn't come up as a question. So it's strictly related to budgets then is what I think I heard you say.
Yeah, so in other situations, it's it's been. We've tried to keep that separation between the different offices. So Reidsberg Madison. And then this one, we contribute directly. So Reidsberg, Madison, and then this one, we contribute directly to that, to the Cornerstone's budget. So again, to be safe, we wanted just to make sure that we have this before you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Ten point one, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven two, resolution establishing late fees for recreation sports leagues programming.
You guys get it up. The memo and the.
We don't have one over here.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we got everything set technology wise now. So yeah, so one trend, and this is kind of where this come from. Recently, I've talked about a few different trends we've seen tonight. But this would be one that we've definitely seen over the last few years. And it really kind of just goes mainly with the sports programs would be late registrations. So in twenty twenty three, we saw thirteen hundred, a little bit over that, total registrations for just sports programs. Out of those thirteen hundred, one hundred and twenty seven were late registrations. So that comes down to be like nine percent of your, your total registrations. A few things that when we do have these late registrations, it does incur more staff time of setting equipment, getting these kids added late onto rosters into sports apps that we use, a lot of communications and getting things reset once we're taking our testins late. One thing that especially at that age, I think is important, is getting them out there and active and playing in these. So it is a lot of times like, we will take these late registrants and we'll make it work, but there is a lot more on the staff and like backend and behind the scenes that's not always seen. So one thing to try to curve this would be putting in a late fee, essentially a smaller fee, something to hopefully, if someone does sign up late, we'll still let them sign up. It'll be able to incur a little bit more of that staff time. But then in the future too, there's a little bit of a penalty for signing up after the registration deadline. Hopefully, it'll curve that behavior, making or having more people sign up on time. So I know we brought this to the public service committee meeting. Our original recommendation was going to be option one, which would be a five dollar increase for, or a five dollar late fee. We thought that was fair, especially to, I think, the resident, non-resident fee being put in place lately. We don't want to outprice people in the community. And I know that's one conversation we've had tonight is not like overpricing people so that they can no longer participate. So that was kind of why we, we suggested option one. We had a lot of good conversation at the public service committee. And then option two was recommended to go forth with a six oh vote. So really just wanted to kind of bring it to you guys and answer any questions you have, but kind of also see what direction you wanted to go.
And option two is the ten dollar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there is, there is another sheet too. We kind of polled, like what we said earlier, like nine different communities. Each one kind of had a, a different method to what they do, but that's up on the screen right here.
I will just add, we do have this as a resolution for the packet. If the board wants to make a motion on it, they would have to just signify which option they would want, so that we can have that as part of the resolution. And then obviously, if there's no action on it, or if it fails, then that would be option three.
I'm going to make a motion for option two to be approved, but I do have a question.
Oh, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for option two. Your question?
So my question, it's kind of, it's more to the, one, I think, I think it's a fair price, okay? But twofold. What has been the reason, the most common reason for the late registrations? And two, what's the actual, have you figured out what the actual cost is for your time for these, for these late registrations?
So the first one, I think there's a lot of different reasons. I think sometimes people just forget, and then they're signing up a day or two late. I think sometimes they hear word of mouth from a friend and then are hoping to play in the same team as that friend, and it's down the line. It honestly kind of goes in waves. So for one example, we had flag football registration end last week, when I like the thirty first. I think we've already taken probably ten late adds up to this point. And generally, it goes in waves. There's about one to three waves before the program actually starts. And I know even in soccer, we had multiple people reaching out once the program's physically started, still trying to add. That's kind of, it kind of goes in waves.
So is it more individuals or is it actual teams that are late registering?
So all of the youth sports programs, it's per person, so it's individual. One of the kind of behind the scenes things that goes into a lot of this is like physically going down, finding all the coaches, which we've talked about, there's generally probably eighty to a hundred volunteer coaches per season. When we're dealing with like three hundred and fifty kids per season, there's a lot of that. Also getting, like separating equipment. So I'll generally go down, break through all these teams, divide the three hundred and fifty kids. So when we have these late adds, it's then adding them onto teams, getting all the communications dealt with. A lot of times, we have the equipment, but getting that separated, finding a pickup time with the parents, trying to organize that, getting them in the loop to practice schedules. We do use app based systems for a lot of the sports programs where like, they can go on there and see their practice schedule, their game schedule. It kind of makes it easier in today's day and age, but getting them uploaded onto that, doing that later, it's all kind of, especially when you're getting one, you're like, okay, that might be it, then you have ten more in that week. It, it takes a little bit of time and it takes you away from some things, especially when you're seeing it at a very, very high rate.
Okay, thank you.
Patience of Job, first, Bill, and then Tashidra.
I just wanted to ask clarification on the motion that it's for option two under the exhibit A of the resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven two.
That is correct. Okay, Tashidra?
Two questions. One, it says that the staff original recommendation was for option one, but they've recommended option two. Why? And then the follow up question is the extra fee, does it just go into the general pot with just registration fees and stuff like that? Okay.
Yeah, so when we went through kind of all the options originally, like I said, we recommended option one. We didn't want it to be something that'd be a barrier for signing up. When we talked through it, or when the committee talked through it more, there was a lot of good points. I think when you look back at the chart that was up there, a lot of the communities did have ten dollar fees. And then there was also a potential worry of in maybe, say, like three years, having to raise that price from five to ten. I think that's, those are the two reasons which I believe it was recommended that way. I know Jim and Bill, you guys were there, so I could maybe have it wrong, but that's just kind of what I picked up from it.
They're in agreement with you.
Yeah, and I'd say that's my opinion too, and I didn't necessarily see ten dollars as a barrier, especially knowing that there's other opportunities if somebody needs a scholarship or something, so.
Good. Mr. Chang?
I'm sorry, I had to finish my, my comment from earlier. Before the vote is taken on this, we're asking to, for you to authorize us to make a change to the, therefore, recital of the resolution. We think that we can clarify it a little better than how it's written right now to reflect a motion that you would like it to reflect.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, and you are too, all right. So the motion person and the seconder agreed to do that? Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right. Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven three, a resolution authorizing the village president clerk to execute an employment guarantee agreement with QuickTrip Inc. Alex?
First of all, I just want to say that I learned in this process of this agreement and the jobs guarantee, that guarantee can be spelled two different ways and both are correct. So I'll put that out there. If you recall at the April fourth meeting, we approved the submission of two, well, ultimately, a grant application to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to get financial assistance for constructing roadways associated with QuickTrip's development project. As part of that DOT requires, in order to get an award, requires a jobs guarantee from the business that is associated with the, the project application. So the next two items, this item and the next item are both associated with that. The first is an agreement to be executed with QuickTrip. Eventually, as part of the T grant requirement, the village is going to have to do two reporting, to fulfill two reporting requirements at a three year and a seven year period. The first three year period is to demonstrate job creation. The reporting at the seven year period is to demonstrate job retention. The number of jobs that is being guaranteed with this job guarantee is three hundred and two. QuickTrip likely anticipates creation of more jobs than that, but that's based on the award. That amount is based on the award that we are anticipating receiving. It's roughly five thousand dollars a job. So the resolution for approving the agreement, I believe, also authorizes the administrator to make some changes, minor adjustments as they work with QuickTrip on this agreement. But I, I think the rest of it is fairly clear, so I guess I'd entertain any questions.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Bill?
Just to clarify, I think I read in there, it's three hundred and two new jobs. It's not fifty that can move down from lacrosse as a promotion.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. If not, any other comment? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right.
Ten point three.
Ten point three, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven four, a resolution accepting a transportation facilities economic assistance and development grant from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation and authorizing the CDA director, the community development director, to execute a T jobs guarantee and any other T program grant documents on behalf of the village. To approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Ten point four, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven five, a resolution to rename a portion of Metro Drive to Pepsi Way.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that's an easy one. All right. Check register was in your packet. If there are no comments on that, we will move to committee, commission and board reports, which are also in your packet. I don't have much of a report, other than I wanted to tell everyone, I'm going to be a little out of commission. I have my hip surgery on Thursday. Following that, I'm going to be back to normal and ready to kick ass, so. I will hopefully not be down too long. They get you up and have you walk within two hours, so Bill told me it's a breeze.
It is. It give you good drugs.
Our.
Do anything.
All right, well, with that.
That's why they don't let you out.
All right, well, with that, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
We have motions and we have seconds. Roll call, please.
Figure it out.
All right. What?
Muted.
And possible action directing a village administrator to not opt out. Is that what you want us to say?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Was that a second?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I just couldn't hear you. All right, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. There isn't any other business to come before the board that I'm aware of?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at nine oh one P M.